Evening and welcome to October 11th, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. Because we have somebody in the audience, let's change this thing around to subdivision regulations, because I know what he's here for. He is here for, I made three copies and he got one, so that's all there is.
Are there any changes from the last version?
No. He's here for Bruce's table. It's like he didn't want it to stand up, because it's Bruce's table.
I sent it to you, so you can incorporate it.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Is this the latest one or an earlier version? I suspect that-
It's in here, it's on page 22, Craig.
You said, after you said that, but it's in there. Yes, it is.
And is this the late, this is the-
This is, yes.
He gave this to us, I don't know why.
I gave you my markup and my-
Oh, I don't know. I got a lot of them.
Oh, okay. So, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Benji is here to talk about pavement width.
How are you? How are you? I am, like, I'm very ill prepared.
See if I like it, oh, I like it.
Is this the thing?
That's the thing. Get the thing, get the wing.
This is it?
I got one.
What page?
I don't know. This one on a diet. This is, this is double printed, both sides of the page, is it a single page?
Yeah, a single page.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
We had a different little meeting yesterday that we were both attended, and I mentioned driveway regulations, the road regulations, and we ended up having a ten, five minute conversation in the parking lot. He was against 20 feet of pavement, and I mentioned something about four foot shoulders, but I guess we don't have four foot shoulders on here, we have two foot, two foot shoulders on a 20 foot pavement.
So, I guess I apologize coming in kinda without much information, I, I didn't know that this was gonna be a topic tonight, but-
Yes, you did.
Before yesterday, and I was in Vermont today, so-
This is crazy, this is, this is huge.
So-
We were down to 16.
No, we talked-
No, we weren't. Hey, pay attention to the word set of the podium.
Sorry.
So, what I understood is if it's under 10 houses, you're, you're looking to go to 20 feet of pavement, is that what I understood? I didn't get time to really read this, I just, I didn't know if you did.
There is, there is- Well, the, we have traffic volumes.
Okay.
But again, I was going from memory as I told you in the parking lot.
Right.
Roughly 10 trips per house, per, house per day, so it's 15 houses.
Okay.
Is a low volume.
And how, without knowing the frontage off the top of my head, how long of a road would it take to have 15 houses on it? Obviously, if there's corners, I know there's more road than other, but-
Assuming it's a straight road, you are a district.
The reason I ask is because the, the real problem I have is the, is with the pavement, with, with modern day plow equipment, you know, we're approximately 14 feet wide with our gear down, and you're gonna have the toe of that wing off, off corners going on 20 feet of pavement.
Could you explain that again?
We, with all of our gear down, we're a minimum of 14 feet wide, our plow trucks.
You're plowing a 14 foot swath of snow.
At least, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you go around a corner, the toe of that wing, which is the front of the wing, nearest the truck, could come off the pavement, and that, that's when you dig in and you tear up the road and tear up the truck. And if you have a winter such as this last winter, we had a lot of snow, after the ground thawed, so that even though you have gravel shoulders out there, you're still doing a lot of damage, you're tearing up the gravel and such, so, um, you know, I, I know that there's, it's like a sliding rule you guys are looking at, 24 for some roads, 22 for some, 20 for the other. What I'd ask is just have 22 feet of pavement for all of them. Probably don't need 24, um, you know, I hope we don't have another river road in town. I mean, a road like that should have 24 feet of pavement.
And that's essentially what the 24 is, for that kind of road.
Right, and that's fine, and I, I hope we don't get another one of that, but 22 feet of pavement, a very rough, uh, you know, very rough number, a mile of road, go, two extra feet, 20 to 22 feet is approximately 193 tons, 200 tons. So, at this year's bid price, you're looking at $12,000 for a whole mile of road. So, you're telling me a developer that's got millions of dollars into a whole mile of subdivision, you can't ask him to put 12 grand in to, to help the longevity of the town? I mean, I'm very sensitive with subdivisions, I don't know how many of you are familiar, I know Jack is, but they're pretty well getting chewed on subdivisions that were put in in the 70s and 80s, and some of it's the town's fault for not having appropriated enough money to keep up with them, but some of it's because they weren't maybe made to have certain specs, so I don't see the point-
You're talking about, you were talking about roads that were built before you even had zoning.
Sure, sure.
So, they weren't built to any specification.
Exactly, exactly.
And the first-
And the ones that were built the last phase are in very good shape, you know, the 2000 era shape, I know they, uh, phase, I know they got 24 feet of pavement, but they're very good shape because you guys have made more, uh, regulations.
We had expected whether it be in build.
Sure, and they're, they're very good, I mean, we just did a road study and some of them are still what we call green status, they're in good shape, so it's terrific. But 20 feet of pavement, in my opinion, just isn't enough. Um, they're gonna start deteriorating from the edges in, and you're going to meet traffic on a road that's half a mile long, you're gonna meet moms going, taking kids to school in the truck, and somebody's gonna have to get over, and I just, I don't see who it benefits other than the person that puts the division, subdivision in. It does not benefit the town aware taxpayers one bit, not one bit. So, I don't, I don't see what the, what the advantage is.
We're also, um, we're trying to get them to look less like bowling alleys and more like curvilinear roads.
Curvilinear.
Right. We've, we've reduced tangent lengths between curves, we've cut down on minimum tangents between curves, the curve, we're tightening everything up, so it forces them to be a little more winding, not just, not straight shots.
Right.
Which will slow people down in itself.
Yeah.
Because-
We've still gotta get over on that.
Yeah, the thing is, is I understand, because I mean, unless you're sitting in one of those trucks, which I've done, and you got a, you got a car coming at you, and you, you get, the front plow average is 11 feet.
Mm-hmm.
And that's from edge to edge, and you're out 11 feet on that truck, then you turn around and you put a-
Fair 11 foot-
Anywhere from a 10 to 12 or 14 foot wing on it, and you, you know, you, you don't wanna get over it, because you'll be into the stone walls, you'll be into trees, and then you'll be breaking stuff, and you wanna have it safe, so the other vehicles coming the other way, you get some room to go around.
I guess I'd just like to know what benefits-
So, 22 feet is about a good average.
How it benefits the town any, you know?
The, the idea behind this is that the master plan tells us we wanna keep the town rural, and big wide roads are a contradiction to a rural environment.
Perfect answer to that. No more subdivisions.
That's easy to say.
Or make them private.
If you wanna do that-
There's companies that make them private.
If you wanna do that, you have to go through zoning, not subdivisions. That's a zoning issue, and you might get support for that, but that's not the issue that's before us.
Right.
That's number one. Number two, what do you, what do you do on gravel roads? You said you have a problem with a narrow paved road.
Mm-hmm.
Don't you do the same gouging on gravel roads?
Yeah.
Worse.
But yet, you told me at one point that you thought gravel roads were more economical for the town to maintain. Than tar.
When it comes time to completely rebuild the road, it is. Over a 20 year span, you know, if the road's built perfectly, Roland Hills is a good example, right? That road is held together. So, in 20 years, we're not gonna spend a lot of money on Roland Hills, but when that road comes time to fix, the pavement's gonna cost, you know, a fair amount of money, where gravel doesn't. But we have to calcium, we have to, the, the difference is, is when a road's rough, such as Bog Road, I can't go grade it. But you're never gonna convince people that we should have gravel roads, it's just not how it is out here in New England, so everybody wants pavement, and people pave their driveways, they pave basketball courts for their kids, I never see people tearing up their paved driveway, so I don't really believe that the overall census of the town is they want less pavement. I mean, I'm the one that takes those phone calls, and I, I can assure you that the overall census of the town's taxpayers are not that they want less pavement. Might be some.
The people who call you are a small subset of the whole town, so to generalize from them, I think probably requires a little bit more.
Maybe.
Uh, go, just for information, I believe Gove Road is a Class 6 road.
Bog Road.
A bog. Sorry.
We just had a meeting and I-
Just, just about a Class 6, the way it's-
I'm about 20 pounds lighter, because we had 40 residents in here that felt very differently about things, so, and, and they should, I'm not, we did not get off on a different subject, but I just, I don't see who it benefits other than the developer that's putting in the road, and for $8,000, if he's putting in a million dollar development, I think he can afford to put in half mile more pavement, two feet wide. Go from your four foot shoulders to three foot shoulders, still got your 28 foot road base, everything else is fine, I just would request, you know, and make it straight across the board, unless you're gonna put another river road in, we probably don't need 24 foot pavement. I know that, once some of your guys' examples, Ben Corliss Drive, didn't need 24 feet of pavement, I've heard that before. I who plow roads every day can't tell that's 24, not 22, but I don't care if it was 22, that would've been fine, but I don't believe anyone can tell the difference.
Well, the question that comes to mind is, you're talking about the cost of pavement, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
But we also have to build two foot more road, which must increase that 80,000 one of the years.
No, 'cause I was told you're gonna have four foot shoulders, so why can't we go to three foot shoulders?
Okay.
Actually, it says two foot on here.
Yeah, and I didn't get it, so I apologize for that, so.
Me too. I didn't look at it.
The two foot on here, though, with the, all the stars there, I mean, that's with, that's with a mailbox kiosk at the end of the road, not a mailbox area.
That's great, I like that.
Underground power.
Yep.
You know, trying to, try to get the obstacles out of the way for you.
No, I appreciate that. Yep.
Yeah, that's the way.
No, I appreciate that, I, I know I brought that up, and so I was in fast-
It's out of the way.
But, I just, I, I guess I don't understand the difference, for, it is, I figured that this year's price, $61 a ton, had been $12,300 to go two feet wider. If you went clear to $80 a ton, because maybe they wouldn't get the same price the town aware would get, you're up $16,000 for an entire mile of road, two feet wider. Three inches with pavement, two inches base, inch top. So, if you go to half a mile of road, I don't know how many, I don't know how many houses, why you opened it up asking how many houses, how many feet of road it takes to have your-
1,700.
1,700, so, so you-
It's best case.
Take that percentage there, you're down to about-
Lots on both sides toward the meter, buddy.
So, you take that down, you're around $5,000 additional pavement for 1,700.
You're in a cluster, you can cut that in half. Right?
You can cut down a lot with a cluster, I'm just talking-
So, you're down to $3,000 additional pavement, I mean, I don't think that's a lot. Task of the developer.
I think a lot of-
And he doesn't care when he retires.
I think the 20 foot and the two foot shoulder is more of a visual and environmental thing than a savings thing.
Yep.
That was certainly my-
That's what the whole theory behind it was.
That's, that's right, off pretty roads, the whole-
Yeah.
So, you're okay with two feet of shoulders if they have a mailbox kiosk?
Yeah, I, I mean, wider the shoulder, the better, but it's kinda hard when we, we can't put in much wider shoulders than that, I mean, we, I just did shoulders, I spent three weeks doing them, um, and the shoulder machine I rented had a minimum of 30 inch pan to do shoulders, and it was real hard some places, because we couldn't do 30 inches, but, um, 30 inches looked pretty nice, the shoulders, but it's plenty wide. I, I did stretch it right out, three, four feet, some spots kinda looked a little goofy, but, but, if you, you're still keeping the same road base, whatever you folks wanna, you know, if you, uh, I guess-
Yeah, the road base is a way to do it.
I guess now it's gonna go out two feet, if it's two foot shoulders. In the beginning, you know, my first understanding, it wouldn't have been any different. You know, I hope not to see it 100 more, you know, I, I understand, listen, somebody wants to buy a piece of land, they got the money, they have the right to do what they wanna do with it, but, uh, I, I did do the, the math here, and we did a road study, and we did, since I've worked here, worked here since 2001, late 2001, we put in, we have a town, somebody's put in approximately five and a half, six miles of subdivision, that's a little over half of a plow route. I haven't had, town hasn't gotten any more guys, any more trucks, so, you know, by making it maybe a few thousand dollars more expensive, it's gonna take that person that has the money, you know?
How long time you talked about, did you say?
I've been here since 01, and I just went down the list of subdivisions that I recall being put in since I was here, so there wasn't much science behind it, but, you know, Fox Hollow, uh, one I just mentioned off Kobe Road, um, you know, those ones, so. I just hate to put less rules when more, more and more people, where has a lot of open land, so more and more people are gonna move here, and it's gonna be hard to keep this town rural. I, I, I don't know where all you folks are from, but I came from very, very rural Montana, and I loved it, huh? Some days wish I could go back, so I understand, like, in rural, believe me, I really do, but-
Since you just said that, I'm, I'm from western Pennsylvania, I talked to you about the garden chipping.
Yes.
I was just down in Pennsylvania.
And I appreciated that comment, because a lot of people out here don't understand it, and they do it in other places.
Yeah, I was just down in Pennsylvania last weekend, and the road I lived on is 18 feet wide, and it never seemed narrow to me until I drove on it last Friday, also drove to Magic Court, I'm, wow, this is kinda narrow. It never seemed narrow for 60 years until the other day.
I grew up on gravel roads, but they were wide, because everyone does 80 miles an hour on them, so.
Neil asked me, asked me one time why I always, I said something about being taught to drive in the middle of the road, and he said, you must've been growing up someplace rural, I said, yeah. So, if I, if Pennsylvania can handle 18 foot wide road, why can't New Hampshire handle a 20 foot wide road? The road I'm talking about has, probably has a one and a half foot shoulder, up there.
I, I mean, I guess I don't know what, what service, a level of service, you might think that, you know, maybe it was required, I know, we just stayed home, but out here, everyone wants to go to work, they wanna go to school, they wanna go grocery shopping, they're, they're out of milk today, even though they said for three weeks that there's a New Year's Eve coming. So, the level of service that we're requested from the townspeople is incredible, I mean, and that's what I'm here to do, is give the level of service, why I'm hired, they're the ones that pay my wages, so, and buy me the plow trucks, so, I'm not, we're not asking the taxpayers to give us two more feet of pavement, we're asking the guy that's got, pulled a million bucks out of his pocket and said, I wanna make 2 million, well, maybe he can make 1,900 and-
I think you're exaggerating those numbers something.
Well, probably, I have no, I've never built a subdivision, but, I mean, you know, I have no idea, but you build a mile long subdivision, put in a road, and start putting in house lots, and it's gotta cost a lot of money, so.
A mile long subdivision, yes, that's gonna cost a million bucks. But he's not gonna make a million bucks.
No, no, probably not, but-
No, I didn't mean to sound away, did I? Do appreciate you guys. I wait in the morning until you drive up my house, I'll leave for work.
I know all you guys, we get along very, very well, I just, I, I really would urge you to just, why can't we just make it 22 across the board? Then you don't have to have a sliding, you don't have to have someone come in here and whine, well, I'm only one house over that, that threshold that you guys had, can't we just waive that for the one, you know, 13 house instead of 12, whatever it was? It just would be, no, 22 feet's 22 feet.
Well, I'm gonna have to go, my vote's gonna go with Mr. Benji, I just wanna, he's convinced me.
What about everything else on the low volume road, too?
I didn't read it, so I apologize, I really do, I-
Because there's a number of things that have changed on it, if you look at it. Went to maximum road grade of 10%?
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, more than fair for fire apparatus, they happen to have to go to a fire before we can get there to salt it, 10%'s plenty steep, so that's fine.
Yeah, that's real steep.
Yep, that's fine.
One thing we had was a maximum tangent length between curves, so that you don't have the straight road that goes on forever.
Yep.
It's kinda ugly.
We're trying to make them, trying to eliminate-
Force them to curve.
Pine Hill Road type roads.
Yep. I'd rather plow a straight road, but I understand, so I'm not gonna argue that, you know?
It really is.
But the more winds that you can put in it, you put more houses, too, because you get more footage and less square.
Only, only on the outside of the curve, you have less meat inside.
Sure, I suppose. So, and I appreciate you guys taking in the mailbox kiosk, I know I've mentioned it, I don't know if you did that, because I mentioned it, or, I know every road agent before me has mentioned it, and I appreciate that, that they, they never seem to get put off as far as we require, or we request, because us in the post office absolutely cannot get along on that subject, so, having a kiosk, if we agree to plow it, would be wonderful. Because that's really my two biggest problems is-
So, if we made that back to 22, you'd be all set with everything else on that low volume?
Yeah, what page is that on, Bruce?
22.
22. I got it now, thank you, appreciate it. You know, and the speed is, the speed's fine, the lower the better, you legally can't post it before below 25 unless you have a road study done.
Yeah, we know that, that's why we stopped at a 25.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think everything else looks good, you know, your, your sub base and everything obviously is good, because the subdivisions that are here in the last few years have held up, so obviously your guys' requirements are, are great. I just hate to see less pavement for the reason they will break up from the outside in, somebody will get over, we'll get over, the trash truck get over, the fuel guy, somebody will get over. And I think we're gonna have an influx of building here, again, we are now, but I think we're gonna, people are gonna try to push more subdivisions in, and not gonna stop it, so I might as well make them, put the money into them, since they're gonna do it. That's my opinion. Everything else looks great, I like the underground utilities, you know, I know it stinks when you have to dig, but the amount of one way in, one way out roads in this town, if a tree comes down, it's unbelievable. I know up my way on mountain road area, it's a third of the town, it's probably not a third, but a lot of the town's population, there's no way out of that place, and it's all overhead, so, those are all great thoughts, so. I just come in for the pavement width.
Okay. Anything else for you?
No, that's it, I appreciate your time, I really appreciate you putting me on top of the list, thank you very much.
Yeah, you have to get up in the morning, go to work, too.
I was supposed to anyways. Somebody else will.
You wanna look at it?
Yeah, I would look at it, for sure.
You wanna look at it, take it.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Did you go to pick up the truck?
No, I went and looked at it, it was their open house, and it was going on show up there, kinda, that was complete, so.
How far along is it?
Yeah, it'll be done in about two days.
Just in time for the first snow.
Yeah, we weren't supposed to start till October, so, we were headed this way this week.
Good deal.
Thanks, Ben.
See you, Benji. Good night, thank you.
Can I ask why, why we have an audience here tonight?
Yes, um, I have got a, a question or a concern that I think is, okay, great.
Please come to the podium, if we can help you, we will.
I'm not sure you'll be able to, but, uh, wanna do everything I can.
Keep to have.
Travis Corcoran, 275 Quaker Street, um, my next door neighbor, Gil Duquette, lives at 271 Quaker Street, and he's been planning a, outbuilding a garage for a couple of years, and he and I have talked about this, and we both think it's a great idea, and I've been excited for him to proceed, and I've got a question about zoning and setbacks, and I understand there's the zoning board, but this is also a case where time is of the essence, so I wanted to bring it up to this group and see if there was any information I could get, either formally or informally, or just share the information with you folks. Gil went down to the, um, I'm spacing on the name, the, uh, construction department, the building department.
Chip, Chip Leanie?
Yes. Um, so Gil spoke to Chip and got a form in hand to apply for a construction permit, and got verbally told what the setbacks were. And then Gil staked it out, and, you know, because we're neighbors and we're on wonderful terms, he's the best neighbor I've ever had, we walked it through, and, you know, I said, I'm not sure that these setbacks are correct. And he said, nope, you know, Chip told me. So, I came down Tuesday morning, because the excavator was arriving, and I wanted to nail this down before the excavator started work, and, you know, went with this handout and said, you know, Chip, I think the setbacks are X, Y, and Z, and Chip at that point said, I don't have time for this, um, you can submit something in writing if you want. So, I did submit a question in writing, calling out two sections of zoning law, and saying, you know, I need a clarification on this ASAP. Chip accepted it, said he didn't have time, he apparently went back to the job site, measured the stakes versus his understanding, or one understanding of the proper setbacks, verified that they did in fact meet the setbacks that he had in mind, but the question, as submitted in writing and verbally, is not, does it meet setbacks A, but what is correct? Setbacks A or setbacks B? I've heard nothing from Chip since then, but construction is already underway. To the best of my knowledge, the permit has not been formally requested or formally issued, and I'm just very concerned that perhaps the wrong setbacks are being used, and Gil is wasting money on a foundation that's not going to work. So, and, and perhaps one answer is, uh, this group says, um, you know, Travis, you're looking at the wrong section, Gil's right, and then I'd be happy, you know, I'd say, okay, you know, I've wasted everyone's time, I apologize, but, so if we look at, um, the first page, section 18.2.2, and this is both for residential and for agricultural property, and Gil is residential, and I'm agricultural, rural, front setback 50 feet, and sideline setback 25 feet. My understanding is that these are the setbacks that are relevant. If we now turn to page two, and we look at section 3.5, and, uh, we need to read the text, nonconforming lots, and this is relevant, because Gil is on 1.6 acres, and thus, it's a nonconforming lot. Notwithstanding the minimum lot area, a single family residence may be constructed on a lot, provided it shall have setbacks that match the requirements as nearly as possible. However, it shall at least have 30 feet from the front and 15 feet from the side. So, that describes that the setbacks don't change, but you can always put a single family house in, as long as the house is that way. Now, as far as I can tell, um, those are the setbacks for a single family house. If you, you'd still aim for 50 feet if you could, but if not, 49, and if you can't do 49, you can keep squeezing it all the way down to 31, but under no circumstances could you do 29 feet, for example. If we flip to page three, we see an aerial view of Gil's lot centered on the page, I am the lot to the left hand side of the page. Gil's lot is 1.6 acres, and if you look at the white area, that is the setback that I've put in, and this is accurate to about within a foot, I use Google Maps and some other tools, and that represents a 50 foot front setback and a 30 foot side and rear setback. If you then look at the black rectangle in there, that is the site that Chip has verbally approved and gone out and verified himself. Uh, this is because he is using 30 feet from the front and 15 feet from the side. Um, I think that that number comes from the nonconforming lot section, I believe that, that, you know, even if nothing was yet built on this property, you couldn't put a house there, because you could fit a house right in the center, and, you know, you'd have no problem complying with normal ones. There's already a house here. But, uh, in any case, even if we're talking about, you know, a 0.8 acre lot, there is not in the code a way to build a 2,400 square foot steel building this close to the road or to the property lines. Um, this is the concern that I'm bringing before the board, and again, uh, so it's a question at one point, if you wanna say, Travis, you're misunderstanding it, please look at, you know, page 73, um, I'd be happy to hear such a thing, um, and if no one wants to correct me and say I'm wrong, then I'm merely bringing it to the board's attention.
Well, A, I understand what you're trying to say, and I kind of appreciate it, however, enforcement is not the planning board's purview.
Okay.
So that is Chip's.
Okay.
Code Enforcement Officer, Building Inspector, purview. That's his job.
Fair enough. So if nothing else, we have a gathering of experts here, and if anyone wants to say, "You know, Travis, we've seen this sort of thing before. You're looking at the wrong page," I'd be happy to hear that.
Your argument, Travis, is that...
Let's call it mostly a question, but yes, please go on.
Your position?
Yes.
On 3.5 is that those more generous
Yes.
...requirements only apply to the residents.
I believe so.
And that all of the other constructions, buildings on a nonconforming lot have to meet the requirements of Section 18.
That is my reading, and that's what I've been trying to convey. And perhaps someone wants to walk through it with me and say, "Nope, Travis, you're reading the right section. You're just misreading it." And just to walk through it, "Notwithstanding the minimum lot area requirements, a single-family residence may be constructed."
Is it possible for Gil to put the...to locate the building in a place that's acceptable for him and you that is in conformance with the 25 and 50-feet setback?
Absolutely. If you look at page three on the map, you know, Gil has 1.6 acres total, and 1.5 of them approximately are unencumbered by town setback rules.
Do I understand? Right. But there's other things that could...there could be wetlands, there could be a subject system in a way, it could be...
That's a great point, and I haven't even thought about...
It's quite a drop-off on the one side.
Yeah, that's true.
I've driven through a few times.
I mean, at this point...
I know that at this point, because I've had this discussion, and to cut to the chase, Mr. Corcoran has sent registered letters to the Board of Selectmen and to the town in general, and it's gone to the town attorney. So I think at this point, it's a point to really...
It's really not the planning board's purview.
It's not the planning board's. And I know there has not been, because I had a discussion with Chip, that there's not a permit been issued yet, so. And they can dig all the holes they want on your property without a permit, so.
I know, and so...
He hasn't gotten one that's been issued, so.
Right. And my point is just, I think that verbal indications are being made from the town offices that are leading to thousands of dollars being spent that are...
Well, I think if, you know, I see your problem, but I mean, if he's spending the money, then I guess it's on...
Yep. It is, but Gil's also a great guy, so, you know...
I mean, he's already been down to discuss with Chip, so I think at this point, I think it's like I said, the power that's out of my hands.
Okay.
Could you guys explain why this isn't in the planning board's purview to state what the ordinance means?
We don't issue building permits, for one thing.
But the question isn't about a building permit. The question is, which controls a non-residential structure on a nonconforming lot? 3.5 or 18.2?
I think what he needs to do is, once the building permit gets issued, he needs to file an appeal. And then the ZBA will hear it and tell him exactly what it means.
Yep. And at that point, like I said, there's been a registered letter sent from Mr. Corcoran to the town attorney and Bill Drescher, and I guess it'll go from there.
If a building permit's issued and he doesn't agree with the building permit, he has a...
So you're telling me that, that the, even though in some cases this board has actually done the drafting of these articles, that what...that the interpretation of them belongs to the ZBA and the town attorney and not to the people who drafted it?
That's right.
Unless we have an application in front of us, and we do not have an application in front of us.
Okay.
We don't have no application.
We don't have a something reasonable like plan or anything else in front of us.
Pay attention to when the permit gets issued and there's an appeal process.
Okay.
So the answer is, we can't tell you.
Okay. I appreciate that. I asked a question, and I got an answer of sorts, so.
Well, A, I don't have enough information to answer the question, because I don't know without seeing everything of the lot. I need to see more of this.
I don't...you don't need to see the lot.
Yeah, I do.
I agree with Neil.
It's irrelevant. This is an interpretation of words.
Their paragraph was drafted with no specific lots in mind, just...
Okay. You can agree with him, and I don't have to agree with him. Continue on everybody. We disagreed before Neil.
In any event, apparently we are not in a legal position
Yeah, we are the board of...
...to respond to your question.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
No, I don't. Thank you. Have a good night.
Maybe I'll take...
What's that?
I'll take that copy.
I found one that I'm not too happy to buy before I actually steal it. We do have an application for a voluntary merger of Nicholas and Denise Fox, 48 East Shore Drive, Map 101, Lot 3 and 4. Chip, oh, by the way, Chip has a sort of an emergency that's like up here, too. Here's a copy of the tax map.
This is which two lots?
Three and four.
I see. Three and four.
Yes.
And these have frontage on what?
East Shore Drive.
And these are, these are non-Lake frontage lots, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. They want to merge them. There's one.
Yep.
There's a mortgage. I was told.
Apparently somebody owns these two lots, and they want to merge these two.
Yep.
I move that the application of Nicholas and Denise Fox, 48 East Shore Drive, to merge Map 101, Lot 3 and Map 101, Lot 4 be approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Do we have the tax map back sometime? Mr. Chip on here, I don't want to try, try not to lose anything. The two other things are lots of previous minutes and subdivision regulations. Has anybody looked at the subdivision regulations? Anybody looked at minutes? Let's start there.
I have some minutes. I have August 8th and July 26th.
We still don't have May 24th. May 24th, July 14th, July, June 42th. That's a question I have. And Mr. Neil took the minutes. At the end of, end of the July 12th minutes, it says, "The minutes of the meeting of June 14th were approved as written. The minutes of June 14th, 2018 have yet to be approved."
Yeah. That certainly is confusing.
Confusing.
And one of those statements is wrong.
I do that.
Did we approve the 28th?
It says we did. Well, I put it this way. I reviewed the 28th, and I saw this and said, "Shit, we already did it." Excuse me, people on TV. And I caught one of the things. We didn't have anything here, but it's up in here.
What, the site work, or was that a real one here?
Bring them here.
Why don't we, why don't we assume that the minutes of the 14th have not been approved?
Good.
Ignore this sentence.
Good.
Okay. So do we need to go back to draft minutes of July 12th?
We actually have to start at May 24th and come forward, but if we can. I can. I really do find my problems. Couple of things.
Why don't you give those couple little things, and we can approve those minutes? So, the motion is to approve the minutes of May 24, 2018 with the following amendments.
Page two, number four near the bottom, lighting colon, downlight is not shown, it says just all packs should be just wall packs. Page four, the first line says, "Debat and Planning Commission should be, Debat and Planning Board." Second line says, "A member of the commission that should be stricken should be introduced, Kevin..." How do we say it? Lefave, who was appointed to represent the board with respect to the application. One, two, third paragraph down, second sentence is a picky one. He noted the proposed additional parking spaces were should be a lowercase W. I can't believe Neil did that. That's it.
I'll second.
Has anybody else looked at these? For discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Chuck abstains. You're gonna look these, aren't you, Neil?
Yes.
June 12th, June 14th, excuse me. The only change I have is in this number two, Roman numeral two, it says, "An adjustment should be a voluntary merger."
Is that inaccurate?
It's inaccurate, but yes. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Okay, I move that the...Mr. Francisco moves that the minutes of June 14, 2018 be approved with the following amendments.
Roman numeral two should be entitled voluntary merger. Second line after that starts application for a, it should be voluntary merger, which would combine the three adjacent lots.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, maybe that's what it was.
Oh.
No.
Two changes.
Okay.
Second page, second page, third paragraph, Mr. Kirk moved, seconded by Mr. Van Der Sluit to continue, I would like to say, the application to the August 9th meeting.
Francisco moves that the minutes of July 12, 2018 be approved with the following amendments.
Thank you. Second page, third paragraph should read, "Mr. Kirk moved, seconded by Mr. Van Der Sluit to continue the application to the August 9th, 2018 meeting." And under Roman numeral four minutes, the paragraph that reads, "The minutes of the meeting of June 14th, 2018 were approved as submitted, should be stricken."
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? You guys are just talking like crazy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? You weren't here.
I know you know what you're talking about, so I'm just gonna go with the flow.
Okay. July 26th. Neil has a copy of it. His hand. These are the ones that I got confused with, to be honest with you. I have a lot of markups on it. This is the first time a wonderful minute cake ever was present.
Oh. You have, is it all mic'd up?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll start with the Roman numeral two, question from CF. Need change that to Mr. Francisco. The second, next line, "Have a correct plan for RSA?" Question mark. The question mark should be 356:20. Under condo docs, second line stated that this is an error. MD should be Mr. Dahlberg. One down, it says, the next line down says MB, which I assume is also Mr. Dahlberg. Third page, T O, third page, or second page, third line, T O W spelled out on a where, please. Third paragraph, Mr. Francisco questions if the GS permits have been pulled. I don't know what I'm talking about. This is all under Remalar's thing.
What, Mr. Questions if the DES permits have been received? Is that what you're asking about? Great.
I wouldn't think so. Not there, because we were talking about condo docs.
Site-specific, maybe? Or alteration of three?
Why would I say pulled? I don't know what you were talking about. And yes, I looked at my notes now. Red and blue. I don't know what I mean. GS.
Where's this? S must be a survey.
Page two, number eleven. Mr. Francisco questions if the GS question mark permits have been pulled.
Let's assume the GS is wrong.
Yeah.
Could that be DES?
Yeah, it could be. It could very be, well, be wrong, because it was made...
Yeah, but I wouldn't have said pulled. I would have said received. You don't pull them?
This one does say that.
Where'd you get that one?
Neil just gave it to me.
Oh, this is the first. I have the first one you sent out to say, "How does this look?" And I already changed it, and you changed it.
Maybe, yes.
Yes.
Because you made the...I wasn't sure of the procedures on how minutes were amended, and so I was in the dark.
So what is the document that is before this? The one that I pulled off the website when Chip or you sent it to all of us?
Yes.
Or this document, which came from a secret source at an earlier time?
A secret source document can get filed.
I'll go on the website and get that one. Let's start over again with this one. So, starting all over again. First page...
The motion is still, but he is changing what he's amending. Subject to the following amendments.
Yes.
Ta-da.
Roman numeral two, first paragraph, second line, RSA 356, take out the and.
356 dash B:20.
Yes. 356 B:20.
And on the first line, approximate, approximate abbreviation should be spelled out. Where's this? Where's this? Madam Transcriber, could you tell us what these are?
There's one on the next one, too.
It says 2/PG10 or 1/PG6.
I assume, I assume I had two questions on the markup for the planning board, or markup for the condo docs.
Is that something?
This is the first point he was making, and possibly it's on page six.
Six, condo docs.
In other words, this was a reference that he was making. This isn't something that you put in to give you guidance?
I might have written page six. If someone said page six, they obviously did, because I wouldn't have wrote page six.
This has to come out. And this M goes down.
I was very green that year.
I think it takes six days.
Okay.
Because I'm assuming page six, the condo docs, is where that happened. And page 10, the condo docs, is where this happened. I just happen to have those right here. Yes, page six is where it said...
No, these are important.
Yeah. His first comment was page six.
And I don't think this is page six. I think this is page one, section six.
Okay.
No.
Because over here on the next page, he has 1/section 6.5, 2/section 6.7.
That's you talking instead of me, though. Because this is page six, and there it says multifamily, multi-story.
Under, under which one?
Under...
Is there a paragraph number here?
6.2.
That's the first page?
I'll hopefully go through these some other time.
You want to go over them?
Yeah. We'll go through this again.
You're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion, yes. You want to touch with me to have it?
You can have it.
Gee, thanks. That may be a little further I got. I'll go further if anybody else wants to.
Well, the next is the August 8th and 23rd.
Does anybody else have these? Anybody else want to read them?
I don't see one other one here, anyway.
Must be a nail biter. Chip put on the email, "Here's what you've all been waiting for." I guess we gotta fill something in here, don't we? That's the 23rd, 88. I think we need to do these later. I don't have the answers to that right there.
What's that, the number one with the question mark?
Yeah. Yeah. My notes, I just wrote down approved, approved the five conditions in my notes. If I found Rusher's letter, which is at home on top of my filing cabinet, I could probably tell you what the number one is. Pretty quickly.
Okay.
Let's just do these next time. That's one. Oh, no. No, that was yours.
No, you weren't. I tried to look for it.
So we also have zoning amendments coming up, or possibly coming up. And Chip reminded me we needed to put these on the calendar. For when we're gonna do them. Does anybody know of any zoning ordinance we're gonna be?
Yes.
Other than, other than Riverdale.
The Riverdale Subcommittee has an ordinance that they are going to be presenting to us at the November 8th meeting. And, um, if we choose to put that in under the planning board, that's fine. But if the planning board chooses not to do that, they will put it in as a petition to. So, I'm just saying, one way or another, that'll be on the ballot.
So in that case. Just want to make November 8th, the first day we have public hearing. Uh, or you want to wait, make it, make it?
You, you shouldn't do that.
Make it the 13th of December.
Can we, does that fit in with the schedule?
It does with the, I don't know.
You don't have to make the announcement of the decision now, you might want to check with Chip, because he's got that calendar from the state.
That's not the schedule.
No. Chip gave me this, that's not what, what I need.
Chip usually lays that out, and it complies with the state requirements.
I usually email Chip a calendar, and him and I go through it, and then we give it to us, and it's like, but Chip gave me this this time, not the calendar.
Okay.
So I don't, what I don't know is the last date you can file petition ordinance. We want to make sure our hearing is before that.
Why is that?
So that they have time to file petition.
So they have time to petition it.
Right.
If we don't go ahead.
Got it.
So we'll bring this up next time again.
But they're, they're on calendar for November 8th?
Yes.
Or on the agenda for November 8th?
Yes, on the, on the agenda, yes, we are. The only thing else we have is subdivision regulations, if anybody's up for that.
We pretty much beat it with a stick already, anyway, haven't we?
I thought so. I don't have any comments, except changing the 20 to 20 foot wide or 22 feet wide prevention.
Yep. I disagree.
I know.
The whole point of highway widths, and I was the one who brought this forward, was to have the roads, and Benji mentioned this, avoid the cordless, um, bowling alley, interstate highway kind of road for the town of where, that's inappropriate. And so, I thought they were going to be 18, 20, and 24. I don't know why, and I don't remember how we got to this. But, um, these are, frankly, from my point of view, in terms of what people are trying to do and where, these are too wide. So, I would like to, I won't try to move to reduce them, but I would like to see them stay just the way they are. For the low volumes, they're very few and far between, perhaps, but I'd like to see them stay small. Narrow, that is, at 20. And this, am I correct, I just want to make sure I understand this, when we say low volume, we're talking about 150 average daily trips? And it's the trips that would come onto an existing road that determines the width.
From the, from.
From the subdivision out.
From the end of that road, how many people, trips in and out, from the existing edge of the existing road.
And it has nothing to do with the width of the road that the subdivision abuts?
No.
So, we could have a situation where the subdivision road is wider than the road that serves it.
In most cases, they are.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Obviously, we're doing it all the time.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we say that the subdivision road need be no wider, it has to comply with these? Or, uh, the width of the road that it abuts or joins, whichever is.
Kind of depends, if the subdivision road is a through road and connects to another road, people might be using it for a way to get through, then maybe it does need to be wide.
How many lots is Corliss Drive?
Four, five, five with the existing house.
And the existing house, I don't think uses Corliss Drive.
Yeah, it does.
They don't go directly down to 114?
No.
1149?
They got a blue road.
And the Cortland Drive is like 14?
Right, that would be the limit, essentially, in this.
You think 14 generates 150 trips, is that it?
They say, they say 10 a day. Counting mailman UPS.
And, and a trip is both ways or one way?
One.
So that means each house has a car going out and back five times, because that's 10.
They get the mail. But the mailman does all the.
Yeah, they all. UPS, UPS guy, the FedEx guy, the mailman?
I understand, but what you're saying is.
Essentially.
Yes. So what if we made the low volume zero to 100?
That's what I'm thinking, let's just lower the number of trips, cut down the number of houses.
Yeah, it'd be 10, 10 lots.
Right. Only do that.
10 houses.
And leave the width the way they are.
So zero to 100 and 100 to 1,000?
Right.
Yes.
So we're basically talking about a 10 lot subdivision rather than a 50.
Right.
That works.
And most, most of the, most of where's lot, subdivisions right now are around 10 anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Except for Duck Pond.
Holly Hill.
But that's a, that goes through, that's gonna come out of.
That's, that's gonna come back, well, it's not gonna be a main road, though, but it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more than, more than 15.
Right.
Okay, you want a motion?
Well, I haven't heard from anybody else yet, you're getting all excited, because I, because I figured out how to do that. Calm down, Neil. What do you think, Chuck, you gonna say anything about that?
Oh, oh, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Zero to, zero to 100.
Yeah, that's fine.
Actually, could probably make.
So zero to 100, the width is gonna be?
Zero volume.
There's nothing there.
I mean. Yeah, and Benji's request is that nothing, unless you have another river road again, but I mean, nothing wider than 22 anyway.
Yeah, but we gotta leave the exterior, because sooner or later, there's gonna be another.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying.
Well, maybe you should straighten the road out a little bit, that would help, Benji.
We want to make them curve, we want to slow traffic down.
Short road, anyway.
If, if River Road were more curved, then a lot of the problems we have with speeding probably wouldn't exist.
Where we'd have more problems with that.
That road's been a speed tra, a speed, Speedway, and that was originally, at the lower end, was originally a state road.
Really? Going to Clough Park?
I had, I had to cover an accident out there, and, and turned around, and it was in the state register that that road from Clough Road turnoff, all the way down to, um, just about where like where Jennifer Drive is, that was under the state, there was no posted speed limit, so I says, oh, it's 35. Now, you look, somebody took us to task and looked it up, and it's actually a state, it was a state road laid out by state mandate, and at that point, it was deemed to be 55 miles an hour. Can you imagine that? That was back in the late 70s, early 80s. And I found that out because of, I found that out because of a fatality out there, and it took a long time to get that corrected.
Is, is, but now the speed limit is 35?
Yeah. And it took a long time to get that corrected, because that was all done way back when, when they, East Ware Village and everything took a turn.
That's not still a state road?
No.
Okay.
No, but it was laid out, and at the time, the state never maintained it, but it was still in the box. And then I found that out because taking enforcement on a fatality, fatal accident. Like, you know, they can jump through the hoops to get all the engineering studies and anything else on it, that was one of those anomalies, anomalies in the.
Yeah, then.
But they do, they race out there.
The length of the cul-de-sac.
Does anybody in the public have any comment?
Yes.
Okay, close the public comment period.
Where's the length of the cul-de-sac?
I didn't like, I didn't like the cul-de-sac lengths at all.
No, next page, 8.3.
Currently, we don't have a cul-de-sac length.
Right.
I personally don't like it.
What, what do you mean by the maximum cul-de-sac length? This is a dead end road, is that what?
Yeah.
It's got like a big rotary at the end of it, like a big.
And if, if.
Right now, we don't have a maximum length.
If somebody wanted to put in a subdivision, and the length of their cul-de-sac road was 800 feet, under this, they would have to put in a U-shaped road? Or what would happen?
They would have to upgrade.
800 feet.
They'd have to go to that to make it a bigger road.
800 feet, one, they'd have to go to, have to have 11 lots.
Is that the, what, the maximum length of the cul-de-sac? That's the, the actual circle itself, like at the top of Pine Hill?
No, from the, where it comes off the existing road to.
Pine Hill Road would be from 77 to the end.
Right, and that's a, it has to be maximum, it's no more than 800 feet for a cul-de-sac?
No, 2,000 on this road on Pine Hill.
Okay.
But.
Either way, I don't, I don't, I personally don't think it should be a maximum.
That's fine.
And Neil, and I know sometimes you have one, but I, I think no, because.
If we don't have a maximum, the board could still refuse to approve if, in the particular case.
We could, we could force them to shorten it.
It was a 1,500 foot maximum, but it didn't make sense for some reason.
Right, and we could want them, and if they're proposing a 1,500 or 1,800, we might want them to go 2,200. So it can be, so it can be connected to make it a through road someday. We may want a through road in some places.
Is, is a road that looks like this a cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
No, not if there's lots in the middle.
No, there are lots here.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's nothing in the middle, it's a cul-de-sac, if there's lots in the middle, it's not a cul-de-sac.
What?
Is that part, is it, is the middle a part of the right away, or is there a house in there?
No houses, this is open space.
Yeah, so there's no houses, so that's the cul-de-sac. But if you put houses in it, it's no longer considered a cul-de-sac.
Who owned, who owned your open space?
I assume that this would be a cluster development and somebody else owns it.
Oh, okay, so the town of where has conservation easement over type thing?
Yeah.
Okay, no, it's not, that is not a cul-de-sac.
So what's the difference between a cul-de-sac and a dead end road?
Hang on, let me, let me.
Dead end road essentially is, is a cul-de-sac.
Doesn't go through or a hammerhead, some of them have hammerheads at the top of it. Henniker has a couple of those, I know.
That's a cul-de-sac, that's not. Here's your road.
And even if, if it's like this? That's still a cul-de-sac?
No.
I got five feet here.
No, then you, then you, then you call it like, it's not, it's not.
25 feet.
No.
Comes in there.
Or you go like this. And that road's not there.
Is that a cul-de-sac?
No.
That's what I drew.
If, if this.
No, I didn't know what you drew, I didn't understand that.
If this center.
You're gonna draft them.
If this center is part of the road right away? If this center is part of the road right away?
Then I see it's a cul-de-sac. But if it's, if it's not part of the road right away, it's, no, it's, it's.
Just a continuation of the road.
Owned by somebody.
But it's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, may not be a building lot, but it's a lot.
Some of them.
Yes, it's a lot.
Where the open space or whatever.
Some of the clusters, I've seen them put a community well in the middle of it, and that's where they're well houses.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, let's eliminate that.
So we're striking back some cul-de-sac lengths completely.
Right.
Maximum cul-de-sac grade stays.
Yes. That's important. Okay, so the two changes are, we're changing the low volume, daily trips to zero to 100. We're changing the local to 100 to 1,000. And we're eliminating the maximum cul-de-sac length from every road.
Correct. Move that the subdivision amendments, and we're gonna put a date on them. Which is in the back.
Nope, what?
Dated today, prober, 11, 2018, be approved with the two amendments just stated.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. Not staying.
Should oppose it, but, I mean, I think you should probably listen to Ben.
Are you voting or not?
I voted for it.
Okay.
Five, six.
When does this go into effect? Do we have to post it? I mean, is there something?
It's in effect.
Do we have to do anything else?
Well, I gotta make some typos, change some typos, give it to Chip.
That's it.
And they gotta do their magic, get rid of the crosshubs and the bolds and all that kind of stuff.
So then Chip will be producing a copy of this with amendments, and give each of us a copy, so we can substitute it.
They go to the town clerk, and then the town clerk gives it back to us, we sign it, da, 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 yes.
But until that happens, we still use the ones in our vote.
Correct.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question about this. Looking at the shoulder width, is that, that must be listed, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's asterisks on there.
Yeah.
In order to be two feet, they have to have a mailbox kiosk and underground power, if they don't, then it's four feet. That, that gives room for flowers.
Gives them more room so they don't nail the mailbox.
Mr. Chairman, I move a jury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
My leg is killing me, I gotta get.